We will now call the January 27th Regular Workshop School Board Meeting to order. We extend a welcome, warm welcome to each and every one of you. We're glad to see you here tonight, and also our viewing audience as well. Welcome. Board members, we have a special poetry recital performance this evening by Mr. Jones and the Treasure Coast High School students. The word that will speak the spoken word, and we'll have Dr. Kevin Perry will introduce them directly after our Pledge Allegiance and Kids at Hope. As usual, I'm asking the board members to please go down after the pledging Kids at Hope Treasure Hunters. If you all please stand with us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Treasure Hunters pledge, please. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. At this time, would you please go down into the audience, board members?
Madam Chair, School Board Members and Superintendent Yost, each board meeting, we have the distinct honor and privilege of introducing to you some of the best talent in St. Lucie County. Yes, in St. Lucie County, not just in St. Lucie Public Schools. Through your support and investment in the arts, we are able to present performances that are second to none. Many of you went to Central last weekend to see the musical Addams Family. Most of us will go to Port St. Lucie High this week to see Hello Dolly, and I'm sure you always enjoy the music from our bands and our choruses. I'm sure you agree with me that, yes, they are second to none. Therefore, in our attempt to diversify and expand the opening performances for school board meetings, we want to call to your attention one of the newest organizations at Treasure Coast High School. Allow me to bring forth Mr. Akaza Jones, who will explain and introduce the performance for tonight's meeting. Mr. Jones?
Good evening. Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, my name is Akaza Jones. I teach art in the drawing classes out at Treasure Coast High School. I'm also the department chair for the Visual and Performing Arts Department at Treasure High School as well. At Treasure Coast High School, I actually sponsor two clubs. One of the clubs is the Treasure Coast Fine Arts Honor Society. The second club I sponsor is Flowatic, which is a club based on spoken word poetry, which is why we're here this evening. The mission statement for the club Flowatic is, Flowatic is to promote leadership and positive attitudes through the art of intellectual listening, writing, and the creation of spoken These students are required to write, they're required to draw, emphasis, they do extensive research, they do a lot of work with vocabulary. All of these things are tied into the standards, the ELA standards for the state of Florida, and they are very gifted and talented in what they do, very articulate with the words that they speak. And they have been doing amazing things on our campus and abroad. And I just want to take the time to introduce you guys to just a third of the members of Club Flowatic. The first I'm gonna have to come up is Derek Miamora. He's the club president. You can come on up there. He has a form that he's gonna recite for you.
Vast holes, I try to fill myself with the thoughts of a saving being. Stress force actions place in the mind a young man at the age of fourteen, which worries me. Hopes and dreams never played in the households, or the streets was embedded in keys, all locked behind closed doors that seem to never open. Excuse me, is anyone there? No sound, nothing but the gust of wind and the ghost that seems to never make its presence. Look around, there's that wind again. Then a light appears, a woman whose lips undefined tells me to save friend when feared. I'm then fast on the plane and forced to jump, a button on my left shoulder to press to wake up. And then remembered, save friend when feared. I had the choice to believe or have faith in, but didn't know how, so I died. Faith, I tried.
Next up is Rachel Page.
Love comes in all sizes. The wiser the lover, the larger the picture, and while pictures are worth a thousand words, words are structured for pictures. Yet many lives have been taken in the act of being hated. Those with an open mind tell many lies to hide on what's on the inside, because outside, the world is waiting, training you for the worst. Whether you fail or not, you can't just give up. With or without you, the world goes on. The trees still sway in the wind, and the sun still rises in the morning. Possible isn't impossible, showing that irony is a new reality, and when the day is done, a better tomorrow is coming.
And last up, the performance, Chris Gill.
Hello, I'm Christian Gill. I just wanted to thank you guys all for this opportunity. It's really humbling. Yeah, I just had to introduce myself, I'm sorry. Happiness, the quality estate of being happy, to have good fortune or being content. See, I believe we must all pursue things that bring us to happiness, whether it's statistics, religion, facts, myths, pursuing a career as an actor or an actress, whether you find your happiness in pursuing a lover with the same gender, whether you look to Muhammad as the final prophet, or Jesus as your defender. [sniffing]
Take your time.
Is it okay if I take? Oh, yeah, that's my phone. Whether or not you look to the universe to find your inner peace, or whether you look at all religion and spirituality as a disease, see, I was once told that if I work really hard, I get to do what I love. But on the other hand, I was also told that if I'm doing what I love, I don't have to work one day in my life. See, I'm not trying to be left with a job, just overbroke, J O B. Thanks Sully Breezy, but I'm trying to love what I do and do what I love, and at the end of the day, give glory to G O D. High school diploma or G E D, just a master's or just a bachelor's degree? If you find yourself loving what you're doing at the end of the day, and you're happy, then by all means, go for it. Check this out. If you have to see to believe, then why not perceive your future optimistically? I'm gonna do what I love until the day I D I E, because it's what makes me happy. And if my happiness causes you to murder me, then by all means, go for it. 'Cause I'd rather live my life believing that there's a God and finding out in the end that there isn't, than live my whole entire life believing that there isn't a God and finding out in the end that there is. Let it sink in, that's my happiness. L P, peace.
We're gonna ask the other two of you to come up at this time. It is so very important that we allow our young people to express themselves the way that they're comfortable with expressing, and we get to hear some of the things that's going on in your lives as well. So I find that the spoken word is a very powerful thing, and I do respect and appreciate the gift that you all have. I know it's very hard to stand in front of everybody and do what you just did, and you did an excellent job. I want to ask you a question here. Why the spoken word? Why are you interested in doing what you just did for people? And each one of you get a chance to answer that question.
Personally, I think if you have a gift, it's meant to show off, not in a prideful way, but just to show what you've been blessed with. The spoken word is, was just something that I added on, 'cause I also rap and sing, but spoken word, I just thought was beautiful, because you can really, you know, say how you feel and show, you know, the world how you feel, and let them get a little bit of insight of life through your eyes. And personally, to me, it's an art, and I just want to paint a picture for you guys.
Well, spoken word, it's like another language to me. I can say a lot more when it comes to spoken word, you know? This is why I choose to say, like, sometimes I have a hard time explaining how I feel, like, you know, right now, but I like to use spoken word, because that's the way I can talk, that's the way I can communicate with other people, that's the way people can understand where I'm coming from and where I feel.
When I started writing, I was in a really bad place, and writing, to me, you know, is a really passionate thing, and it's something you had to put your all into. And I've always written all my life. Spoken word saved my life, and it saved others, and I just want people to know that they're not alone, and I want to reach that message out to them and give them that helping hand, because that's something I never had. And it's such a beautiful way to speak and connect to people, and that's what I've always wanted to do, and that's why I love it.
Mr. Jones, thank you for bringing these lovely people, young people, to us tonight, and thank you for coming, and I know that that helps you express what's inside, and so you encourage other young people as you do the same thing. Thank you very much. Okay, we're finished. Keep doing it, keep doing it, it's very positive. Can we put our hands together for these young people again? At this time, I would like to mention to our unscheduled speakers that may be here tonight, if there is any one, please bring your form up. You can get a form from the back and bring it right to Ms. Harrison, which is on my left next to Superintendent, and we will be more than happy to recognize you at the appropriate time. I also want to go over our vision. Each school board meeting, St. Lucie County Public Schools, in partnership with parents and community, will become premier centers of knowledge that are organized around students and the work provided to them. Our name will be synonymous with the continuous improvement of student achievement and the success of each individual. Our promise is to move from good to great, focusing on our core business, the creation of challenging, engaging, and satisfying work for every child, each child, every day. At this time, I will open the public hearing. We have before us the proposed adoption of amendments to School Board Policies Number 2.01, to approve the adoption of instruction materials for English Language Arts for grades two through 12. Are there anyone who would like to speak at this time regarding the public hearing item that is presented? Seeing none, come forward. Madam Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. Prior to that, could we ask Assistant Superintendent Carrie Patrick to provide our public with a summary of the proposal at this time?
Superintendent Carrie Patrick, please come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, we would like to formalize the process of our ELA adoption by sharing with you what we did to make certain that we moved through, vetting the resources that were approved by the state with stakeholders within our district. Here to help me do that this evening is Mr. Nick Zralik, who is our Director of Curriculum. He was very heavily involved in the process. So, Mr. Zralik, would you like to begin?
So as we went through the adoption process, and I'm gonna give you just a very brief drive-through this process, we did have different levels of involvement. So with teachers, we had both an electronic review and also a hands-on review. From a parent's standpoint, we had posted out on the website the links to the different resources to allow for parents to review the materials as well. And then at a district level, we looked at the curriculum content through both a digital and also the hands-on materials as we went through that process. One of the pieces, as we started back in October, was go through, and I'm not going to read every part of the timeline on there, but as we went through the process from October all the way through December, was basically step-by-step going through generating the rubric, which had 55 different indicators on there that we looked at and reviewed the different materials through, grouped within 18 domains to help us select the best instructional resource for that process, and then all the way concluding that process through, up through tonight, to go through and have the public hearing on it as well. As we move on, I believe Ms. Patrick is gonna take us through the areas of focus.
And this is just for transparency, so everyone knows truly what we looked at as we made sure that we were selecting only the very best resource to support the instruction of ELA standards in our classrooms. As we moved through the process, members of the committee made sure that we looked at quality of text, the ability of the resource to provide a variety of text selections, quality of questions and tasks, quality of writing instruction and tasks, quality of speaking and listening instruction and tasks, quality of language instruction and tasks, quality of instruction and assessment, making sure that we were also paying attention to accuracy of content, authenticity of content, comprehensiveness of student and teacher resources, alignment of instructional components, ease of use, motivational strategies. And rounding out what we looked for, we saw was there explicit instruction, guidance, support for student participation, targeted instructional strategies, targeted assessment strategies, and then of course, an overall rating. Looking at all of those components and making sure that our teachers, our administrators, our parents had access to see these materials, is how we came up with the decision to utilize collections for our six through 12 English Language Arts resources. We brought that to the board in December, and according to procedures, we needed to post that for public awareness, which it was posted prior to that as well. We kept it posted for longer than the 30 days, which was the minimum. Excuse me, January the 12th is when we brought that down. During that time, we did receive a couple of comments, nothing that was concerning about the selection. And so we have this evening a public hearing, as I stated earlier, to formalize the process and share what we do as a district to select only the very best of resources. We were pleased as we went through that there was high quality in all of the resources that we looked at, but I do believe that we've got a very positive selection for the teachers and students of St. Lucie and collections for English Language Arts.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick, for reviewing the steps taken to inform the public about the proposed adoption prior to board action. Our recommendation at this time, I recommend the board ratify its action taken on December 9th, 2014, to approve the adoption of instructional materials for English Language Arts for grades two through 12 as presented.
Thank you, Superintendent Yost. Board members, we have the recommendation, we've received it. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Henley, by, I'm getting ready to say Hilsen, I'm getting ready to say Hensley, Ms. Harley. Moved by Ms. Harley, second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion then carried five to zero. At this point, the public hearing is officially concluded. We will now move right to our Special Order of Business, and we will begin with Mr. Jim Hughie, our Superintendent's Search finalist report. He's prepared to give us tonight. Mr. Hughie, please come forward. We would like to say thank you, thank you first of all, for your diligence and your outstanding work in scouting for the next St. Lucie County District School Family Superintendent. We see that we have a good number of applicants here, and you've done a fabulous job, and we commend you on that. At this time, I'm gonna move out the way and allow you to give your report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The thanks belongs to all of you, but I want, in fact, I want to start with a couple of thank yous, if I may, and then get right to the work part. First, I know you all have said this, and you'll say it again, 'cause she will be here for a few more months, but I think we owe a great debt of gratitude to Janelle Yost for the great job she's done, so thank you very much. You not only steered the ship well, you, we saw lots of improvement in lots of areas that she wanted to work on, so thank you. And besides that, she wore Nebraska red tonight for me. Anyway, that's what I told her, right? Okay. The other group I want to thank, and a number of them are here, there were, we had our Superintendent Search Advisory Committee, the members who served a year and a half ago, and then we also had a number of new additions to that, and all of them have jumped in and done a superb job of helping with all the work that needs to be done behind the scenes to get everything organized for when we have the candidates onsite and so on. So I commend them for all of that work, and it takes many, many people to make that work smoothly when you have five people going through in a very short time period. So thank them. And then finally, thank this Board of Education and all of the people that we talked with, and there were 25 applicants, and for those present who have not looked at them, all of those applications are on the St. Lucie County School website, so you can review them at your leisure as well, and take a look at the ones that the board finally decides tonight that they're going to bring in for interviews. But almost all of those candidates, when I had individual conversations with them, and I would ask them questions like, "Why do you want to come to St. Lucie? What's your thought?" Almost all of them, particularly those from Florida, but also those from other places, pointed out that we have a school board that is consistent and is responsible, and even though you disagree, at times when you do disagree, you always come back and finally make a decision that is the right one in your perception for kids. And a lot of people talk about that, but not many boards do it. And when there are boards like that, it's so much easier to recruit than if they aren't. So thank you for that, and keep doing it, by the way. That will be very helpful. So our task tonight is multiple, and the first one is a difficult one, and that is for you to take the 25 applications and narrow them down to somewhere between four or five to interview, and that would be for the first, those that you believe most closely match what you are looking for in the superintendent. And as per our agreement, I will indicate to you a number of those that I believe are capable of doing the work, and then within those, indicate the four or five that I personally believe, from having done the research on each of those candidates, read all their application materials, talked to people who know them well, interviewed them, indicate to you the ones that I think are most closely matched to what I believe your needs are, and what we know from the community in terms of what they're looking for, and what you all have indicated they're looking for. And I think that is an exceedingly good point, or good way to go at this for this reason, there are multiple people who could do the work, but you're looking for somebody who is the closest match in terms of the needs of the school district right now, and who is capable of being a leader, who can be here for a period of time, so you have sustained quality leadership. And this district has been very fortunate in that way, contrary to many other districts in the country, because you have had sustained quality leadership in your last three superintendents, including Janelle, but they've been here for a period of time. And the national average for the length of stay for a superintendent is just around three years, and you had, I believe, seven years and nine years or 10, and then Janelle for the last two. So I'm hoping that whoever you end up with also will commit to being here for a period of time, and that was part of my consideration. So the first thing, before we launch into looking at the names, would be that I want to remind you, even though I know I don't need to, but I want to for the public's sake as well, in Florida, you must do all of these deliberations in public, and I understand the reasons for that, but there are drawbacks. And one of the drawbacks is, we have to know that we're dealing with the professional reputations, and in some cases, personal reputations, of each of these 25 individuals. And we want to make certain that whatever we say, we know is absolutely true, or to the extent that any human being can know the truth, and that we are not in any way jeopardizing that person simply because we have one piece of information, and it may not be the total picture. And that is very, very important. And whenever I've gone to all of these candidates, there will always be, when you, if you've been a superintendent or you've been a school administrator for two years or longer, you're going to have people who don't agree with you. I know that's a surprise to you, as board members, that was humor, but there are definitely people, and if, and all of these individuals, if they've done things, you will find people who don't agree with some of the decisions they made. And I say that because in this age of instant communications and social media, which I think are wonderful, and I use some of them, not all of them, by any means, but because of that, and I guess the simplest way to say it is, I've always believed the best thing about the internet and all the social media is, everything's available. And the worst thing about the internet and social media is, everything's available, because everything is out there, whether it's true or not. And so part of my task is to take everything that you would find if you Googled one of these candidates, and there'd be a newspaper article that would shed a negative light on them, to try to find out as much as possible from the candidate him or herself, as well as from other sources, to see what we can determine about how much of the newspaper article is absolutely accurate, or is there another part of the story? And we've tried to do that, and I say that as a preamble, because even some that I'm recommending, you will find that there are some negative things on the internet about. But in every case, if I'm recommending them, it's my belief, and I'll accept the responsibility, it's my belief that what has happened in their circumstance, where it appears to be negative, is not negative when you know the full story. And in every case, I won't bore you with that story tonight, but I promise that those that do come in, if there is a story like that that comes out, they will have a clear explanation, and you, I think you'll be able to see why I came to that conclusion, at least, that's my hope. Okay? So you now have the tough task. I'm gonna go through the list, there are 25, I won't go through all of them. I'm gonna give you the 11 that, when I first went through it, I read it with the idea, can these people do the work based on their professional experience and what judgment I could based on telephone calls? And I came up with 11, which isn't narrowing it down very far, but I'll give you those 11 in just a one sentence about each one, and then after that, I will give you a recommendation about the four or five that I think are the ones who most closely match, and then I'll throw it into your hands, 'cause only the five of you can decide, and you can say, "Yes, I agree with these, no, I don't," or "I would like to say, well, let's interview these three," and then one of you's gonna have to make a motion along that line, and we'll go from there. So as we go through it, we're looking to narrow it down to four to five. Four would be ideal, because that would be two per day for the two days we have set aside for interviews. That three, as you know from last year, is a bit of a circus, but you've made it work, so we can make it work again this year if you want more than that. And then also, as Troy pointed out today, that I can't forget to make certain that we also have one or two on deck, because it could be that between now and February 18th and 19th, when we do the interviews, we could lose one or two, just because of circumstances where they get another job offer or whatever. I don't think it's a real danger, but it does happen, so we need to have that back up. Okay? So the 11 that I had on my initial cut, which basically said these people can do the work and are the most closely matched, is Anthony Allen, who is, interestingly enough, first on the list, he's also a graduate and a product of the St. Lucie County Public Schools, and is a superb principal in West Palm Beach. And while it's a huge leap from being principal of a school to being superintendent in a district this size, it has happened, and he's demonstrated a real ability as a principal, so I would have him on my list. The next one is Sandra Brower, who is a superintendent in New Jersey, and when you read her application, she's already making $230,000. She understands she cannot make that much here, but she can retire from the New Jersey system. She's very strong, she has worked through some very difficult issues in her district, and is one that... and is one that, by all indications from those who know her, is a superb instructional leader, and has the courage to deal with things when they're, when we're not doing what we need to do for all kids, she's willing to stand up and say, "We're, this isn't successful, folks, we've got to change what we're doing," which, that's the first way you can bring about change. Next one is Eugene Butler, who is currently in Tucson, Arizona, as an associate superintendent, but before that time, he was a principal in Miami, and in Dade County, was principal in six different schools, in most of them only two, two years each school. You always want to be careful when somebody changes that often, but the story behind that is that in each case, he was put in that school because they were not performing well, and the powers that be said, "You seem to have the skills to turn them around, please do that." And in four of the five schools that he was principal of, they went from a grade or F or D up to a B and an A. And he, on one of them, he was very open and said, "I went there and it was a D, I did everything I knew how to do, and in two years, we were an F." So, and I said, "Well, two out of three ain't bad by the songs, so maybe four out of five isn't bad." But he definitely has the skills to know how to move a school forward. Next is John Carvelly, whom most of you know. John is a successful principal in West Palm Beach, and is a former board member here in St. Lucie, so he knows this county well, and is dedicated to this county. So, I think most of you know John, but he is currently, as I say, a principal in West Palm Beach. Next one is Wayne Gent, who was also a former employee here. He started his career here, and for 20 years was a teacher and successful administrator in St. Lucie County, and then for the last 14 years has been employed in West Palm Beach, the final three of those being as superintendent. The district has been named for, I think, five years running, I could be off by a year, as the most successful district in all of the urban districts in the state of, state of Florida. So, obviously has demonstrated great skills after leaving here as well. Next one is Stuart Greenberg, who is the Director of School Accountability for Leon County, and before that, had a lot of experience in State Department jobs, primarily working in curriculum and reading. And all the reports on Stuart are that while he's not been a principal, he knows and understands what has to happen in the classroom. The next one is Diana Green. Diana Green is the Deputy Superintendent in Manatee. Before that, she was Deputy Superintendent in Marion County. Her experience in both districts is that she has led efforts to raise achievement and been very successful, particularly during the last two years, working as a deputy in Manatee. Next one is Christopher Marzak, who is an Assistant Superintendent in Oak Ridge, which is a very small district in Tennessee. You mostly know Oak Ridge because of the Oak Ridge Boys and nuclear power. But the reason I included him in the list is that, two reasons, in addition to his work there, and when he went to Oak Ridge, he talked with the superintendent and said, "I don't plan on staying too long, I want to be a superintendent, but as long as you, I will give you everything I have while I'm here." And the superintendent said, "That's fine, I'd rather have the best one for a short time, and come work with us, and I will do what I can to help give you the training you need to be a superintendent." Before that time, he was a principal and highly successful in the Nashville Public Schools, which is a large school district with a very diverse population, and all reports from there are very solid as well. You always worry when you bring in somebody from very far away, and Tennessee's not that far, but when you bring them in, are they going to stay very long? So, I put that question to Chris, as I do to all of them, and he gave what I thought was a good answer. He said, "I have four daughters, twin seventh graders, a fourth grader and a kindergartner, and the next move I make, I want that to be the last one for my kids to have to move, so if I can be successful there, I'd like to stay there for a long period of time." So, that would be his connection. The next one is Greg Potter, who is a superintendent in Maine, and has been in three different districts in Maine, and highly successful. My concern with him was the fact that he has always been in very small districts, but everything that I gather is that he is capable of handling larger assignments. And from my own past, I was doing the third search for five-star school district outside of Denver, a district of a lot, 35,000, so not different from here. We hired a young man from Cody, Wyoming, who, I think Cody had 3,000 students at the time, or maybe 2,500, and a lot of people said, "Can you make that leap?" Well, in his case, it was pretty clear he had the leadership skills, the Board thought so too, they hired him, and he was very successful and moved that district forward. So, while it is a question we have to ask, it is, I think that in this case, he's capable of making that leap if you choose to, to interview him. The next one is Orlando Ramos, and Orlando has been around many different places, including New York City, Chicago, and now East Baton Rouge, a large urban district, which is really a county district in Baton Rouge, obviously. And in every case, he has worked in situations where the job was turnaround, and I first met him in Chicago, and he was doing a good job in a very difficult situation to hire, to try to turn some of the most difficult schools around in that community. When you look at his record, he has moved a lot, but in each case, it's with a reasonably good explanation about why. For example, Chicago was only one year, that's because the superintendent who was there at the time reorganized it, brought in a number of people for turnaround, that superintendent left the next year, the new person came in and wanted to reorganize again. So, that's why Orlando has moved around a lot. The next one is John Stanford, who is a Deputy Superintendent in Columbus, Ohio. Immediately before becoming Deputy Superintendent there, he was the educational advisor to the Governor Ted Strickland in Ohio. When Governor Strickland was defeated, that left John Stanford without a job, the superintendent knew him well, and knew what his skills were, so hired him as superintendent. In addition to that, he has a law degree and a PhD. He, one of the questions I had was, it looked like most of his work was policy. So, I said, you know, "Can you roll up your sleeves and go to work in a district where you need to do that?" And secondly, I asked him, "What, how are you going to answer principals if, say, you haven't been a principal, how are you going to do this?" And he had an excellent answer, I won't bore you with all of it, but one of his answers was that, "I've worked very diligently for all the years that I've been in this school system and others, to try to learn exactly what a principal does, and to work directly with them, and I've supervised them." And then he was hired in addition, in the summertime, to do principal development training for the city of Chicago. So, that one is one that's different from your traditional candidate, but one that I think is worthy of consideration. So, that's, that's the 11. I tried to get to 12, that seemed to be a more biblical number, but I could only get to 11, so that's where we are with those. Then, out of those 11, and then I'll be quiet and take any questions, out of those 11, I have four that I would recommend at this point for the, to be brought in for interviews, and three out of that group that I would recommend you consider for alternates. However, I want to make it clear that I don't pretend to have all of the wisdom or all of the right answers in relation to every candidate, and I respect your judgment, so if you say to me, "Jim, we'd like these two, but we don't like these two, we'd like to go," you won't say it that way. You'll say, "We would prefer having two others." I'm perfectly open to that, because this is your decision in your school district, and I want to support that. So, the four that I would recommend that you consider is Wayne Gent, for all the reasons I've indicated before, Diana Green, who was the Deputy Superintendent in Manatee, Chris Marzak, the Assistant Sup in Oak Ridge and formerly Nashville, and John Stanford, who's the Deputy Superintendent in Columbus. The three alternatives that I would indicate are Sandra Brower of New Jersey, Eugene Butler from Tennessee via Miami, and finally Stuart Greenberg, who is a bit like John Stanford in predominantly policy, but all the words that I get from people who know him well say that he's capable of leading a school district. So, I will be quiet from that and ask any questions, or do whatever you need me to do to move forward.
So, Board members, we open the floor for any questions or comments from you at this time that you may have. Thank you, Mr. Hughie.
Okay, looks like they're pretty satisfied with, okay. Come on, man, come on.
Jim, I do, I do thank you. The, the great thing about this list that we have, even the 10 that you have, or most of them are capable of coming in here and doing the job, and as a Board, we are very grateful for this list. They're all qualified candidates, and we're just very fortunate to have this selection, whether because we did it earlier, or just because of the two years that Deputy Yost has been here, that has solidified the, the organization, where, where it makes it possible to attract more, and the teachers that have put effort into this. When I sat down with you earlier today, and, you know, shared some of mine, most of my list matched up with what you've given me, and also some of my committee members, I appreciate all of those that served on the committee, also, most of their matches, their top four or five were normally on ta, on target, along with the seven, the lot of, the fifth, sixth, and seventh one normally was a little bit different. So, I feel comfortable with the top three. So, and, and so was it my committee in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to add onto that, it's, it's not my credit, but it's all of your credit, and it really is, I do appreciate the effort that all of you put in to talk with people on the screening committee, to talk with others that you know, and bring a lot to that. So, I do appreciate that.
Yes.
Mr. Hughie, I really appreciate that. Of course, I always like it when my list matches yours, that's always, that's always nice. Because we're looking for, as you know, someone to be with us for a while, who understands collaboration, who understands how economic development, education are intertwined, how all the governments work together, all those different things. So, I'm very pleased to see that the ones you have brought forward, I know a couple of them, and I know that their skills are, are very much in line with what we are seeking. So, I'm very pleased with this, and I look forward to reading more about them. I found some of the applications very interesting, even though, although they weren't a good match, very interesting people with very interesting skills.
Thank you. And one of the things, as you read through those, I know you do this, sometimes you get good ideas that you can say, "Oh, maybe we ought to take a look at that in our district," and I know you found that last time, so.
Okay, I do have a little comment I like to make, and I don't think it's that little. I had your top three, but I had a fourth one that I'm very interested in, and that is Eugene Butler. I've heard some great things about him and his accomplishments, and really in the area of moving schools up to A schools and top schools that, you know, so I like to throw that name in.
Okay, that's fine.
Rather than an alternate, make him one of our people.
Sorry to interrupt you, Madam Chair. He was one of the alternates that I recommended, and I have no problem if you want to bring in a fifth one, and the, the interview schedule that, a number of the committee members and Board Member Holly and a number of the rest of us worked on, we can accommodate those three, three at one time as well. So, if somebody wants to make a motion and have five people brought in, we can do that.
Can I hear a motion on the floor, please? Moved by Ms. Hilsen. Okay, I second it. All in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried, four zero. Okay, we're going to have the five.
Okay, so the five are the original four plus Butler, right?
Yes, sir.
So, we're all clear? I'll read them all one more time, and I hope I don't blow this, so keep, help me stay honest. Butler, Gent, Green, Marzak, and Stanford. Correct? Okay? And then, do you want to consider Sandra Brower and Greenberg as alternates, or if we lose one, just stay with four? We can do either way.
Okay, then we're going to make a motion on that?
Oh.
Discussion?
I want to hear what your motion is first. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to make a motion that they be, I guess you say, held in the wings, that they're contacted, that they're still viable, but that they're not in the top list at this point.
Okay.
Motion on the floor, second?
Not sure what that motion was. Are we sticking with four then?
Yeah, stick with.
With alternate, the alternates.
But if one backs out, are we going to go with five, or are we going with four? Second.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Hinsley, can you, can you repeat that motion just for clarity, please?
She said, "Holding in the wings threw me off."
You're belong, you're involved with the arts, you know what that means.
Yes, I did, I wanted to make sure for clarification purposes.
That, I guess that we have the five that we will interview first, but that we have two that are, that are strong contenders in case we need to expand our field, basically.
Okay.
Got that? Five, and then two if we have to.
Two in the on-deck circle in case somebody backs out or can't play that day.
If they drop out before the interviews happen?
Interview stage, right.
Okay.
Discussion.
Okay, Ms. Engersoll, the floor is open for discussion.
I like the four process, because it gives us enough time to sit down and interview. I felt on the third one, when we have three, we rushed it, and that's the reason, I had nothing against Mr. Butler, I just had more of a philosophy of, "I don't want to rush the process, and if it was, you know, I don't want to give the guy an extra day by himself," but I'd rather go just with four. But since we're already going with five, I would still like to go with four.
Well, we voted, we've already voted.
I know, but I'm just letting you know, when I vote nay again, that's the reason why this time.
So, now what we have on the floor now is the alternates, and that's what we're discussing now, and that's what she's making the call, the motion for the alternates, so.
But what I think I heard Mr. Hughie say is, "Do we want to continue going with five, or do we want to go with four?" Because we went with five to bring in Mr. Butler. So, if Mr. Butler drops out, do you stay with four, or do you bring in an alternate?
Oh, oh, okay, that's what he's saying.
That was my point.
Okay.
Yes.
So, somebody make a motion, please, to that. Okay?
We're having a motion on the floor.
Second? All in favor? Hmm? Any opposed?
Nay.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carried, five to zero.
Chair?
Yeah?
Can I make a comment for us?
Yes.
One reason that I feel like we're investing a great deal of time, and a great deal of money, and a great deal of expertise, and we saw in the last search where there were health issues with one of the candidates, life happens, and if we're going to put this money, I don't have to have even numbers. I'm okay with uneven numbers, but I, I think this is a lot of time and effort on everybody's part, and I don't want to, I mean, this is a really important decision.
It is.
So, just to come out with even numbers, or to do this because it's less time-consuming, I think it's more important in the possibility somebody may drop out. We've seen it happen before, so that's why I feel like it's okay to have the five, because this is a big step for us.
I'm just saying with four, it gives you more time. You have two and two, rather than two and three, and you'd, you've lost some time with that candidate. I'd rather have more time with your top four to, 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 to hear their opinions and, and get some more understanding. That was my viewpoint.
Okay, very well noted, yes.
Madam Chair, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Engersoll, however, I think with five, we, we've done it before, we know that we have to be on our game all the time, and there's no downtime. It says break, but there really isn't any break, and we, it's two days of intensity that will pay off grandly for our community.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have one, I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Well, go ahead.
I have a question, I didn't hear the last motion, so are we putting two on deck? Is that where we, the motion was?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the motion?
Good, I just couldn't hear the motion when it was made.
Yes, we're putting two as alternative people that we need.
Okay, very good, because I need to make those calls tonight yet if I can. Then I have one other thing, and I'm done, unless you have questions on me. I think you have in front of you a recommended schedule, and unless there is a major concern on any of your parts, I would li, I think this takes into account everybody's schedules so that all of, five of you would be available, which is the most important piece, and then also gives the district advisory committee, the community forum, they have an open forum for community members, as well as have chance for the cabinet, for administrators, for teachers, and for union officials to be able to meet with them and give feedback to all of you as we did last time. So, I'd like to get this solidified as soon as possible. If you need a day to look at it, then you can let Chris know, or email me, or Debbie has always helped me through this, because she helped create the first one, whatever you want to do, but I would like to get it nailed down so we can let all the groups who are, need to be there know the time. there know the times and so on.
Board members, would we like to solidify it tonight or would you like, need more time to go over?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the schedule that has been presented to us for February 18th and 19th for the committees.
Moved by Ms. Hinsley and seconded by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Hugie.
Madam Chair, if I might ask one more question of Mr. Hugie before he leaves the podium. As it stands now, we have two alternates. What method would you use to determine if we have one fall by the wayside, whom would you call first?
Because I live in Nevada now, near Lake Tahoe, we just draw out two cards and whoever had the highest card, no, I, we'd have, I'm sorry.
I just want to know the procedure.
I couldn't pass that up since you asked the question. What I would strongly suggest is that we come back to you and ask all of you, or if you want to rank them now. I honestly don't think we're going to get there. I think all of these people are very interested based on calls today, but if we do, you five have to decide which one you'd want to bring in.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could just interject one, and this is from an experience of some time ago, the board selected five, and before we could negotiate, four were gone, and all of the other candidates had been eliminated. My suggestion is, is subject to Mr. Hugie's confirmation, that you not delete any of the pool, that is, the other candidates until the process is complete. Certainly applicants may withdraw their application, but if the world comes to an end and you have six or seven individuals drop out, you may want to go back into your applicant pool with Mr. Hugie's suggestion. The way it went before, the action that the board had taken foreclosed that, so we were left with one candidate. And I'm merely suggesting that, that the sense of the board is that the applicant pool remains open in the unlikely event that you have to go back if you have a number of withdrawals.
Great suggestion, Mr. Harrell. And I would second it, and the way we would like to do it is we'll just send an email to all of them indicating here are the ones who were invited in first, but we would like to all of you to stay in for the very reasons indicated, and then we'll make certain that if they have, if any of them want to drop out, they can do that, but let them initiate that action, not us.
Okay. Okay. We're in agreement to that. We don't have to motion that, but we just agree that that's the way we want to do it.
Great. Thank you all for all the time and effort that you put in on this.
Again, thank you, Mr. Hugie, for your valuable work and commitment to St. Lucie County Schools. I also would like to acknowledge the superintendent, search community advisory board members that came tonight. I'm asking you, and some of you are already standing trying to go out the door, but just don't go yet because I want to acknowledge all of you, I want to see your faces. Please stand if you are part of that advisory board committee tonight. Please stand so that we can see the community support and the folks that have come out, and the community will know that we're not doing this alone, but we are doing this based on the community's efforts because we are a village. I want to thank you again. It takes a whole village to raise a child. Thank you for going out of your way to be here tonight. We appreciate you very much. Please continue to contact us if you have any information that you may want to share with us regarding any of our candidates. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could add one thing. All of you as committee members, thank you for coming, and we will be getting out to you through Chris Harrison very soon what assignments you all volunteered for and how we want to put all that together, so you'll be hearing from her very soon. Thank you.
And I believe we'll turn this portion of our special business order to Mrs. Yost, but I think someone canceled out.
That is accurate. Madam Chair, AT&amp;T presentation is being postponed until the second board meeting in February.
Okay, all right, great. At this time, we're going to move right along to our CTA reports. CTA report, Ms. Vanessa, no, not, not right now? What are we doing? Excuse me? Oh, okay, okay, okay. I'm sorry, we're going to continue with our consent agenda first. Ms. Tilson, Tillman, it's time to move to that. We have the agenda before us. I would entertain a motion at this time to accept the agenda as present.
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Ms. Hilsen.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, five zero. Board members, are there any conflict that you need to, or conflicts that you need to declare on any of the items that are coming before us this evening? Hearing none. Superintendent Yost, may we have your recommendations?
Most certainly. I recommend the board approve a total of seven consent agenda items, beginning with 5.01 and ending with 8.01 as presented.
Board members, are there any items you wish to discuss and therefore pull out for separate vote?
No, ma'am, just discussion on 6.02 and 6.03.
So you mean comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Rather than discussion, okay. We'd like to hear your comment first, Mr. Ingersoll.
Yes, ma'am. Just a couple of years ago, I went to a couple of principal training, and one of the biggest needs that came across that meeting was the need for assessment support. And Ms. Wild and April Menci, or Dr. Wild and April Menci came forward with a focus group and task force and went out and we all sat together as a board and came up with this position. And I'd want to thank the school district and the union for supporting this because it's so key in our schools where it was laid on other people to be able to handle assessment. And now that we're freeing up guidance counselors to be able to do their job and to counsel kids is so crucial. And I want to thank principals and assistant principals for coming forward and telling us that was a dire need and let you know that the board did hear that, and we worked with the school district to be able to make that available. And want to thank those people that were responsible for bringing that to us.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll, for that comment. May we have your recommendation, Superintendent Yost, on the remaining items?
Yes, ma'am. Continued recommendation of the board to approve that a total of seven consent agenda items, beginning with 5.01 and ending with 8.01 as stated.
Okay, may we have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Hawley.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero. And I believe at this time, Madam, Superintendent, report, please.
Yes, ma'am. There are three updates to be provided by staff this evening, beginning with Mr. John Lynch. Mr. Lynch will address the assessment data highlights. Mr. Lynch is our Assistant Superintendent of School Improvement, and we welcome you to the podium, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Mrs. Yost. I want to thank one of our poets earlier this evening. I think I heard a line in there about statistics make you happy. So I'm one of those people that instruction and student achievement and the statistics that surround that make me happy. So, and I'm going to use that as a lead-in to my presentation tonight. I want to talk to you a little bit about, I'll back that up one, our changing assessment landscape and some data trends, and maybe bring in some rationale as to why do we periodically change assessments and increase the rigor of those assessments. So I want you to take a little journey with me in the beginning and take a brief look at the history of assessments in our state, going back to about the time I came to St. Lucie County in the late 80s. We had something called the HSCT or the High School Competency Test. Then we moved into FCAT with the Sunshine State Standards, and then along came the Next Gen Sunshine State Standards, which brought us FCAT 2.0, and now the Florida Standards Assessment, or FSA. Each time we went through that chronology of tests or that history of tests, evolution of tests, we had more challenging standards, and we were asking for teachers and students to respond to an increase in the rigor of those assessments. So what I want to do, if you have a little scratch paper and a pencil, bring you through a couple of examples from some throwback questions of tests of the past. This was a question from the 1986 High School Competency Test, and this was a graduation requirement, and this is an assessment that students had to pass to be deemed college-ready. So that was the situation that we had in 1986. As we moved to FCAT around 2006, we moved into something called application, real-world problems, where we took some basic arithmetic, number gymnastics, if you would, and applied it to the real world. So here's a question that, that just requires students to know that there are 360 degrees in a circle, 40 degrees being one-ninth of that, so one-ninth of the weight of the whole disc would be that little piece. So there's an application piece to that, which of course corresponds with an increase in rigor. As we move to our current Florida Standards Assessment, and I apologize, that's a little blurry, that was a screenshot from one of the, the training tests I'm going to talk about a little bit later, but in this particular problem, you can see the range of rigor from which number is closest to zero to deriving a formula which will calculate the interest earned compounded annually based on a particular deposit. So a much higher order question. Teachers have responded throughout Florida's assessment history to that higher standard, and kudos to them for, for doing that. The teachers and school leaders certainly have stepped up. Why do we have a need to raise the expectations and increase the rigor in new tests? Well, this quote says it well, and I underline the part that jumped off the page to me, to help each student reach their full potential. That HSCT question, if I can draw you back to that, which number is closest to zero, I don't think adequately prepares a student these days for whether it be the K-20 assessment or college life or the workforce. So certainly the need to increase that rigor. Also, as the statistics play out in each of these assessments, we reach a level of high performance or relative high performance. So the way to push it even higher is to increase that expectation. And we'll talk about some very particular predictable things that occur when we do that. But first, I want to take you on a little journey of a different perspective as how we look at data. In St. Lucie County, we may compare one school to another, but what I want you to think about tonight is to take a broader approach. If that might be the 2,000-foot view, I want you to move up to 10,000 and 50,000 where we look at Florida as a, where it sits in the nation. How do we perform nationally on national assessments? How do we perform internationally? And then take you back and look at St. Lucie County data trends and how do we fit in with that state relative to the national scene or international scene? So Florida is a leader in graduation rates, student performance, and closing the achievement gap. We have improved year after year the last several years. St. Lucie is trending right along with the state, so that will give us a perspective of where St. Lucie sits internationally and as well as nationally. So in state statute, it is required that schools or the commissioner require school districts to partake in national and international assessments. We look at NAEP, which is the National Assessment for Educational Progress, and we also look at some other studies and assessments, the TIM study, for example, is one that we're, we're pretty well aware of as well as others. So looking at trend data at the state level here, the goal is to be able to analyze those results, look at our progress, and most importantly, not just write the end of the story, but write the new story as to how we're going to address needs and how can we improve as a county and as a state and as a nation. So if we look at one particular study, this is progress on international reading and literacy, Florida ranks second in the world in fourth grade reading, and that's improving scores in literacy. If we look at some trends with Tims, if we look at science scores of fourth graders, they're ranking seventh in the world in science. They're ranking ninth in the world in fourth grade math. If we look at some of our national assessments, looking here in terms of the NAEP assessment in fourth grade reading, where Florida sits second in the nation, in the nation is how we have improved fourth grade reading scores. If we look at eighth grade reading scores, Florida ranks fourth in the nation for recent improvement in those reading scores. If we're looking at, in this case, fourth grade mathematics, Florida ranks fourth in the nation, tenth in the nation in eighth grade mathematics. So we are in the upper echelon of those aspects of student achievement nationally, the improvement of those scores, whether it be in the particular grades in reading and/or math. We also should be proud of the fact that we've improved our ranking from the K-12 achievement from 12th in the nation previously to seventh in the nation. I think what's also important has been a real push in St. Lucie County as a former high school principal. We now rank third in the nation in increasing advanced placement scores. Those are those tests through College Board, of course, that will allow students to test out and receive college credit. In terms of the achievement gap, whether it be the poverty gap, we have closed the gap in both fourth and eighth grade reading and math between 2003 and 2013. We are the only state in the nation that has narrowed the achievement gap between white and African-American students in both fourth and eighth grade in both reading and math. And the U.S. Chamber of Commerce ranked us as an A for academic achievement for low-income and minority students, as well as ranking us 10th in improvement there, 10th in the nation. So Florida has been a leader in that, and sometimes we fail to like take a look at that perspective. We're looking at our schools and comparing them to our schools and then comparing them to the state. So as our state follows the path to excellence, so does St. Lucie County. If we look at our graduation rates, for example, although there is work left to be done, if you look at the blue line there, we lag a little bit behind the state, but our trend data is certainly moving up. This particular year, I apologize, I don't know how clear that is on the screen there, we're looking at a 5.5 gain in St. Lucie County, 5.5% gain, whereas we're looking at a 0.5% gain at the state level. So we continue to close that gap. St. Lucie is very proud to be only one of 13 districts in the entire state showing gains on all end-of-course assessments. And again, that, those end-of-course assessments in Algebra I and Geometry and Biology and Civics and U.S. History are new to the assessment scene. But last year, one of 13 districts to show gains on all of them. If we're looking at our ELA, our English Language Arts, in fourth grade, we exceed state proficiency rates, and in eighth and 10th grade, very significant growth in those proficiency rates. At our differentiated accountability schools, and these are the schools that are identified by the state for low performance, those are critical needs schools. Thanks to your approval, we have a very strategic plan on how to address those. And last year in St. Lucie County, we were very proud to say that nine out of the 11 DA schools last year, or 82% of them, increased their overall student performance. Just got a call today from, from another county in Florida asking us how we do that and how we structure our differentiated accountability team, and they want to come to St. Lucie County to see how we do that. Dr. Ella Thompson, through the State Bureau of School Improvement, has shared our plan and our structure throughout the state of Florida as she moves through our region. This is a piece of data that I'm very proud of, and we should all be very proud of. Our teachers really did a fabulous job with writing over the last three years. If you can look at those red arrows, let's look at fourth grade for a minute. St. Lucie County over the last three years has shown an 11% increase in the proficiency in writing, while at the same time, the state is at 5% increase. Now, we can, we can look at that and say, well, is St. Lucie that far behind? That's why we have a greater potential of growth. But if you look at the proficiency rates there, in fourth grade, we're actually higher than the state and continue to outpace them. If you look across at eighth grade, at the gains there, doubling state growth. At 10th grade, significantly higher than the state growth. So we are, if not exceeding, certainly closing the gap in our achievement there. And when we compare that to that state that we just spoke of, that's second and fourth in the nation, I think that's quite impressive, and kudos to our schools and school leaders for doing that. So this year, there is a new assessment once again on the horizon, the Florida Standards Assessment, or FSA, as we'll talk about it. And probably the big question that needs to be answered is what kind of results do we expect to get on that test this year? And this is where I talked about earlier, the results in a new assessment like this are fairly predictable. There is something that we call the implementation dip. And if you could read it there, Michael Fulon said that it is the inevitable bumpiness, he called it, or difficulties encountered as people learn new behaviors, or in this case, a new assessment with greater rigor. It's a dip in performance when there's an innovation that requires a new skill. So as a teacher, I have to go with analogies. I call it my two-wheeler analogy. To ride that tricycle, there's a skill set. You have to pedal, you have to steer, and you have to follow some safety guidelines. When you master those skills, just like we mastered the skills in the HSCT, we move to something different. And there's the implementation dip. As we move... As we move to that two-wheeler, it's a more difficult process because we're adding the rigor of balance to that activity, just as we're adding the rigor of the more challenging standards to the FSA assessment. But the goal, of course, is always the victory at the end, the mastery of the skill at the end. So that's my way of explaining the implementation dip. The most important part that I want to share with you about the implementation dip is in that red box. It is the goal of the schoolhouse to shorten and make more, less deep, if you would, that dip. If you can see the two gray lines there, the gray line on the bottom is the current performance, the gray line above it is the desired performance. And as you start out with something new, you will see that dip. The goal is to have that not so deep and not so long in duration, and that's where teacher training comes from. So that will be the goal as we head into this new test. So as we look back, there is absolutely much to celebrate, not only on the state level, but here in St. Lucie County, when we compare ourselves to the state of Florida and where our state sits both nationally and internationally. So the cycle is one that we have seen before. We have new rigorous standards and assessments. There's a great deal of angst, if you would, in professional development and training and work on the behalf of school leaders and teachers and students and parents and the entire educational community to address those. There is a temporary implementation dip. That's something that we expect to see across the state. We're going to make it very shallow and very short and work on some continuous improvements. And once again, just as we did post-HSCT, experienced this success after FCAT, experienced that same success, and we will do the same with the FSA. So as we look forward, there certainly is much work to do. So as a parent or as a community member, how can I find out some more information about this new assessment? Well, there is a fantastic website that's there at the top of the page, www.fsaassessments.org, which is really a one-stop kind of shopping for information regarding these new assessments. Parents can go in, you can log on as a guest, you can create an account, you can have, even have them send you email updates. It's very easy to do off of this being the homepage. This is the first page that you would see, and you can go on here and log in, create an account. And if you look down the left side there, there's information for district test coordinators, there's information for educators, there's information for students and parents. So there's a wealth of knowledge here. And what I did, I took a couple of screenshots to show the community and our viewers what is there. Now, this is a screenshot, so that menu continues on and on and on. There's more information here than you probably would care to look at, but a wealth of information regarding this new test. In the upper left-hand corner there, it says, "Take a training test." This is probably one of the most valuable pieces on the website where students and parents can go in and actually look at sample FSA-type questions. Some of the formats to the questions are new to students. For example, well, here's the page that you would go in and sign into the assessment, but I wanted to move forward to this slide concerning this question. It's certainly a new format that students have not seen before. What you would do there with that middle column that has the numbers in it, you will drag those with your cursor over to where the answer should go in that chart. So it's a drag-and-drop type of format to the question. You are certainly going to see, we are certainly going to see, an increase in the rigor with this particular assessment. And again, the reason for the implementation dip. But historically, and kudos to our teachers, they have answered the bell each and every time to these higher standards. So it really is improvement by design. The state is designing more challenging standards. Our teachers are certainly designing lessons to address the increase in the rigor that's needed to address those standards and be successful on the test. And we're at the state level certainly designing challenging assessments to monitor student learning and, most importantly, to provide us with feedback for improvement. So the desired result certainly is there to move students, to have them be better prepared to meet the demands of life beyond high school. And I said it once before and say it again, kudos to teachers and staff and the school community that throughout history we have been successful. It is going to be okay. As we move into this new area, as we ride our two-wheeler, students, teachers, they will rise to the occasion. They have in the past and they will again. Any questions?
Yes. Just a statement, John. Thank you so much. It was so positive, and I don't think we get to see and hear positive. I think that school grades and so much of what we do see in the newspaper and so much of what we hear is negative and punitive, and we forget to say thank you to our staff, our teachers, the people that have brought us to this wonderful point, because we hear all negative. And our legislature, I mean, it's a moving target all the time. We think that we've adapted and we've created the right plan, and then all of a sudden the number changes. And so to be adaptive in the way our staff in St. Lucie has, I mean, the constant training and assessments, and even our public has said, "We're tired of all the testing, we're tired of all the testing." And I mean, I believe in testing, but I don't think everything should be so negative, and that is the way it rolls out to us legislatively and, of course, within the newspaper. And I mean, it just is a negative. We need to remember to say thank you, and this is a perfect example of the good things in St. Lucie.
I think if we leave it in its proper context of improvement, it's about, the results are there, and we may choose to do some things with them that we don't agree with. But in the classroom, those numbers are meant to guide improvement in the future, and that's what we have to focus on.
Any one else's comments or members' questions?
Mr. Lynch, I also would like to say thank you for that data that you showed tonight. It shows that we're moving forward as a county academically, and it helps to educate others out there to see that we are moving forward. And as you said, mentioned about, and even as a state, I mean, that was phenomenal, that data that we have as a state right now. We should be, celebrate that as well as the increases that we've made as a county. And as you mentioned with the new state standards now, we are looking at having to get used to that particular testing. And what I could see, based on your comments tonight and the data that you've shown, I can see where we've been rising up steadily. And now we're just going to expect the same thing even with the Florida standards. We're believing that we'll continue on that mode and won't have such a dip. But thank you so much for your information. We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. The next presentation will be offered by Mr. Bill Tomlinson. The Department of Education has been conducting onsite monitoring visits, and outcomes have been shared with Bill and his staff. And we thank Bill for his focus not only on exceptional education, but the student services offered within St. Lucie County, and we look forward to the summary offered this evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mrs. Yost, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'll try to make it as brief as possible about the onsite monitoring visit that we had last year from the Department of Education. This is no longer a visit where it's like a gotcha type of visit, where they come in to purposely try to find things that are wrong. What they're trying to do now is to identify any shortcoming with the provision of services and then to help provide assistance to you to make it better so that the outcomes are there for children with disabilities. What I can tell you is that the Florida Department of Education and the Bureau of Exceptional Student Education and Student Services is charged with making sure that school boards do enforce all of the rules and regulations associated with educating children with disabilities, that the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is enacted, and that there's assurances provided so that children do have a free, appropriate public education, and that the Bureau is responsible for ensuring that the requirements in IDEA and the educational requirements of the school board are all provided as they are written into law. In fulfilling the requirement, the Bureau then establishes a monitoring process with the local school districts where they come in and they will conduct these onsite visits. And I just point to bullet, the bullets in the second paragraph. They examine ESE records and ESE services, they evaluate procedures, provide information and assistance to school districts, and they assist school districts in operating efficiently and effectively. And this monitoring process, again, is to ensure that the outcomes are there for children with disabilities. And the reason that St. Lucie County was chosen or the public schools were chosen this year or last year for the onsite visit was because they do also look at anything associated with the delivery of the educational program, and in particular, in this case, was discipline of children with disabilities and the restraints that are often used on children with disabilities. And those were the two target issues, and those are in line with many other districts in the state of Florida. There has been an overrepresentation or a disproportionate representation of black males with children with disabilities that are suspended from school, and it is our process that we must improve upon to make sure that we decrease the risk ratio so that children with disabilities are not suspended or expelled from school at any higher rate than non-disabled children. And that anytime a restraint or physical management process is utilized for children with disabilities, that we're keeping accurate documentation of that, having meetings with parents, intervening to try to make a plan or create an action plan that will reduce the likelihood of that restraint ever occurring again. So the school district was monitored. We did have individuals that came in from the Bureau. They brought in other individuals with them from discretionary projects. There were about 12 individuals that paid a visit to us. It was, the lead on the team was from the University of South Florida, Dr. Michelle White. She has worked with us many times before, and her goal in that with the program specialist from the Bureau that was in charge of the visit was to make sure that we did a thorough and accurate review of all of the data associated with any restraint, use of a restraint, or any suspension from school. And we had to make sure that we were paying very close attention to the disproportionate representation of black males to make sure that we are finding ways to decrease the number of suspensions for children outside of the school system. The visit occurred in four phases. In phase number one, there were guiding questions that were sent to us prior to the onsite visit that we were required to answer. In phase number two, there was an actual onsite visit with those 12 people coming into the school system and meeting with us as an entire Department of Exceptional Ed and Student Services at the district level. And then we did that review and onsite visits with them. In phase number three includes follow-up and post-initial visits. We have had four additional visits from the Department of Education since the initial visit in January of 2013, and we have another one scheduled for February the 6th of this school year. So we do continue to work with them as phase four of our evaluation process. They selected four schools, totally independent, based on the DOE's web information system where that they could review all data for suspensions and restraints. Those schools that were chosen were Delkassen's Educational Complex, Fort Curs Westwood High School, Manatee K-8 School, and Northport K-8 School. And you can see, these are the 12 people that were in attendance in this review. Four program specialists from the Bureau, the Fiddler's Discretionary Project Director, the Differentiated Accountability Person, the MTSS Liaison from the Bureau, the SEDNET Manager, the Director of the Center for Autism and Related Disabilities, two individuals from the Florida Inclusion Network, and the USF Technical Assistance Specialist, which is Dr. Michelle White. They did data collection, which resulted in interviews with staff, reviewed restraint protocols, IEP implementation protocols, actually did school walkthroughs and observations, did an action plan and problem-solving process, and reviewed all of the district data. The reason here, if you see the yellow highlighted area, for two years in a row, the risk ratio for children with disabilities, black males in particular, was at a level three times higher than what it should be. So that is the action plan that we continue to work on to reduce that as it should be a one or below one. This is a national problem. This is just not unique to St. Lucie County. And because of the work that we have been doing with the University of South Florida as well as this onsite monitoring process, we have been invited to participate in a study, research study with the University of South Florida, which will probably become a national study. So we're very pleased to have the opportunity to do that. And we did see a drop in the first semester of 2013-14, that that risk ratio went from 3.84 down to 3.0. And we have created an action plan that will continue to work toward dropping that risk ratio. I wanted to tell you that when the monitors did come from the Bureau, what we did get was rave reviews for every principal that was visited, every school. I have been here for many years, and I've participated in many reviews with the Bureau and with the Department of Education, but I have never heard as many compliments to our schools and to the programs and to the interventions that were in place for children. So they did compliment our PBIS model, that we do have evidence-based practices in place. Do you have a question, Ms. Ringers?
Yeah, I was going to let you finish, though. I was going to go back on the next slide.
Okay.
If you have a chance.
The district's code of conduct, that it has been reviewed and revised to include response to intervention and multi-tiered systems of support, as well as our code of conduct now also has PBIS strategies. You want me to go back to a slide?
One more. Just looking at the white, I noticed that's the one going up while everything else is going down. Have we even addressed that?
What we're looking at is not just simply children with disabilities or black males, we're looking at the entire discipline for all children.
Okay, because again, I just, we continue to go on and focused on everything else, but I see it's going up. Just wanted to make sure it was addressed.
It does increase whenever there is a continuation of suspension from school, and one of the things that we have worked on continuously over the last five years is to decrease the number of suspensions from school for children. The training that is provided, we were also complimented on the training that is provided for children and for teachers in CHAMP, the Classroom Management Model. We are now providing training in youth mental health first aid. We did receive a grant this year for that. That we have a problem-solving model where the out-of-school discipline data is reviewed every nine weeks by teams of people, and we also have a district-level team that is reviewing that data and taking information back to principals every time that we do review that. They did note that there was a continuum of services provided at all schools for children with disabilities, ranging from in-class support to resource rooms to separate class settings. They were impressed with the services that were at Delkassen School and the variety of programs that were provided for all children, that there was a crisis management system in place in all schools, and that teams were trained in nonviolent crisis prevention intervention, and the involvement of positive behavioral supports at varying degrees at all schools that were visited. Also, the Behavioral Intervention Classroom, Project Success, the Drug Prevention Agreement that we have with data, where we do have counselors in schools, and also the community alignment with Project Rock as an alternative to suspension. Our restraint and seclusion data, we have worked with them continuously to set a goal to reduce the number of suspensions. In just a cursory review of our suspension or our restraint data this year, we have already seen a reduction as compared to this same time last year. And we are meeting continuously. Every time there is a restraint used, schools are now advised to convene IEP teams and to reexamine the behavioral intervention plans or the IEP to make sure that it is an effective measure for children again so that that restraint will not continue to occur. Behavior analysts, we're one of the few districts that do have behavior analysts, and they work closely with school psychologists and teams at schools to help in the reduction process for this. And then we did receive these commendations that were provided by the Bureau, that the district receives support from community organizations and agencies. We have outreach programs with the school for intervention for academic and behavior. We have an effective PBIS structure in place as alternative, and alternatives to out-of-school suspension. We have many data collection tools and warning systems available to impact the multi-tiered system of supports, and the percentage of students with disabilities in irregular class placement exceeds our SEALAC groups in the state and also exceeds the state average. And then we have been responsible for creating an action plan and problem-solving so that we will continue to... we will continue to reduce the suspensions of children, expulsions of children, and the use of restraint. Any questions?
Madam Chair. Mr. Tomlinson, I just have a question. When we have expulsions and it identifies a child as an ESE student, the state doesn't break it down. I mean, if it's just a student that has a speech and language issue, it could be a student that was autistic or had sensory, severe sensory problems. Why don't we break it down, or it's just not done that way into a minor? No?
It is not done that way. Children with disabilities can be expelled from school, but there can be no cessation to the services provided in their IEP. So, even if we take that route, we would still have to provide services for them.
Well, the reason, really, I think sometimes it helps, and you give us that information if we ask for it, but I'm surprised the state doesn't look at, because sometimes the action is driven by the disability in the case of a child with sensory, you know, disorders or autism or something, whereas a child that has a speech and language, I don't see that behave, you know, which drives, the behavior drives the disability or the disability drives the behavior. So, that's why I've always thought that we should break it down, but the state model doesn't do that.
And the state model also, when looking at the number of restraints that are used for children, they look at the number, not at the total number of incidents that occur. Many of them are with the same child over a period of time, and that will increase your number as well, because you must record in the state database system every time a restraint is used. And that's reported immediately within 24 hours to the Bureau.
And that, and buses as well, if there's, okay, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
The good news is that we are, are really starting to see improvement, and we have people focused, and they continue to do that. And the team that came here, again, how highly impressed they were with the schools that they visited and the principals that they spoke to.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Overall, very favorable report. I know that our work will continue as you review data on a regular routine basis in order to continue to make changes and determine next steps. Thank you. Finally, our Million Father March. The initiative occurred earlier in the year, and I'd like to invite Mr. Dr. Kevin Perry to the podium at this time.
Madam Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Yost, we all know and believe in the power of parental involvement in the educational success of all children. Each year, schools plan many activities to connect the home with the school. Under the direction of our awesome superintendent, we began researching best practices connected with parental involvement. The research continually showed us that generally, we have our strongest connections with mothers. This led us to focus on the involvement of fathers. Today, Mr. Henry Santa Brea, Principal of Lincoln Park Academy, Elker Harris, Dean of Students at Lincoln Park Academy, Eddie Robinson, Dean of Students at Manatee K-8, and Edwin Munoz, Assistant Principal of Bayshore Elementary, will update you on the Million Father March Take Your Child to School Initiative. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Yost. This evening, we'd like to provide you with a brief background of the Million Fathers' March. And I'd like to start out by saying that it was founded back in 1996 by a gentleman by the name of Philip Jackson, who was a part of the Black Star Project, Chicago-based organization. And its mission initially was to advocate for community involvement in education and the importance of parental development to ensure that all children are properly educated. With that being said, they recognized that the power of male involvement in education of all students. It's also very important to note that this particular event marked the beginning of a year-long educational, social, financial, emotional, and spiritual commitment by men to children. For this reason, the Million Father March became a very influential and celebrated event for communities nationwide and has extended worldwide. The research has shown, and one particular research by the Parent Institute, it showed that schools where teachers reported high levels of outreach to parents, test scores rose. In particular, reading test scores rose 50% higher, math test scores rose 40% higher than those schools that reported low levels of outreach. The study also showed that when fathers and men were regularly and substantially involved in the education and social development of the, of their children, those children had higher standardized test scores, higher attendance rates, higher graduation rates from high school. They had lower rates of suspension, expulsion, arrests, fewer incidents of violent behavior, and were less likely to use drugs, alcohol, or engage in premature sex. I'd also like to share some of the facts that I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, would agree have a positive impact on all children. A father who actively participates in the education and social develop, emotional development of a child is invaluable and irreplaceable. And of course, research, research shows that children whose fathers take active roles in their education earn better grades, score higher on tests, enjoy school more, and are more likely to graduate from high school and attend college. Those children also have fewer behavior problems when fathers speak and listen to them regularly and are active in their lives. A good father is a part of a good parent team and is critical to a strong family structure. And finally, strong family structures produce children who are more centered, academically proficient, socially developed, and become valuable community assets.
Good evening to all. Armed with this information, the committee was formed under the guidance of Dr. Perry with the support of our superintendent, Mr. Henry Santa Brea from Lincoln Park, Todd Smith, David Washington, Craig Luge, Elker Harris, Eddie Robinson, James Sloan, and Edwin Nunez from Bayshore Elementary. We worked together diligently as we planned and developed our goal and mission for this event. We decided that we would set an outreach to schools and community organizations for support. And on that day, October 7th, would be the official Take Your Child to School Day. The committee discussed how to incorporate and transform the event into a movement and not a moment. These fine gentlemen also were supported by our community. As you can see on the screen, we have an array of gentlemen who have supported us, supported the value and the merit of the mission. I would like to just highlight that Patrick Murphy, Congressman, and Larry Lee also extended their reaches from the government side to let us know that they supported us in these endeavors. To solidify their support, they provided us with proclamations from the city, proclamations from the city of Fort Pierce, as well as our school board.
So, once the plan was established for the Million Father March, word was sent out to the schools, to all the, all the schools in the county. And each school was responsible to put this into effect, to have a small committee and put on a plan for October 7th to inform the community to all the fathers and male role models that this event was taking place. Many schools use, use the different avenues of communication. They use social media, they use phone calls. Superintendent Yost sent a parent link call days before all the principals did the same thing, followed, followed with the same, with the same procedure. Letters. At my school, at Bayshore, we sent a letter to all the parent, to all the fathers through the parent newsletter, through the school, through, and through the school website as The day, the day of the Million Father March, many different schools invited parents using different activities. For example, at Bayshore, we have refreshments, and we took the opportunity to present to the fathers how they can volunteer at our school, at our school. Other schools like Alapara Flats, they tied the, the Million Father March to the Kids at Home philosophy. And on that, that morning, parents were receiving ACE cards as part of, of, of the whole program. At Westgate, they had sports events with, in which parents had, get a chance to play with their children, you know, before going to school. And, and, and as you can see in the picture on the right there, that's, that's on my school, that's in the whole, the whole way at Bayshore Elementary, where we actually put the, the compacts the parents signed that morning as part of their commitment to their children. Part of the Million Father March Take Your Child to School, to School Day included compact signing event in which the father or the role model in front of a child will sign as part of their commitment. And they get to take, they got to take a copy of the, of the compact home as a reminder of their commitment to the, to the child. And this resulted in 2,2,700 signed compacts across our district.
As you can see, after our October event, our Million Fathers' March, we started a movement here. And after that event, we reached out to several schools to ask for their testimonies concerning events that took place that day. And first, I would like to read Mr. Robert Sugg's fourth-grade teacher from C.A. Moore Elementary. Chestaay Moore Elementary had a great turnout for our Million Fathers' March. We had over 80 parents bring their children to school and stayed for a presentation designed just for fathers. The fathers were engaged and enthusiastic about engaging and assisting their student with being successful in school. It was amazing. And that's from Mr. Robert Sugg's fourth-grade teacher at Chestaay Moore. Ms. Pam Holmes, Principal of C.A. Moore Elementary. Research states that fathers who are involved with their children's education increased that child's rate of success in school and throughout life. At Chestaay Moore, we went, we wanted our fathers, grandfathers, uncles, brothers, and the likes to feel welcome and valued. We wanted them to know we are here to support them and show them the best way to get involved with their child. Just as we remind our students each and every day to be the best they can be, we want our fathers to be the best fathers they can be. Work together as a team, their child will be the winner. And that's from Ms. Pam Holmes, Principal at Chestaay Moore Elementary. Ms. James Cox, Assistant Principal of FK Suite. At FK Suite, we had 172 fathers join us for breakfast and walk through, walk their child to the classroom. It was a fantastic morning. We are planning two other events, two other activities. During Literacy Week, we are inviting fathers to come and read a book to the class. On February 13th, we are having a father-daughter dance. Ms. James Cox, Assistant Principal at FK Suite. This morning from Westgate, Ms. Maria Pedruff, Media Specialist at Westgate. Westgate, Westgate's event was held in the gym and had over 300 participants. 170 dads signed a contract vowing to be more involved in their child's lives. The dads are, the dads were invited to participate in some of Westgate's most exciting physical educational activities. Each dad had a task sheet that included cup stacking, hula-hooping, basketball, volleyball, tabletop four-square bowling, jump rope, and much more. The Westgate PTO organized the sign-in sheet and helped run the concession stand. Westgate dads are our students superheroes. And that's from Westgate. At this very time, I would like to call one of our very own committee members, Principal at Fort Pierce Central High School, Mr. Todd Smith, to come and read his testimony concerning
It even, I vividly remember the morning as we arrived at school early at 6 o'clock. Laney, my daughter, my son Riley, why are we getting there so early? So, we left my office, we met Ms. Ash in the, in the courtyard as she's wheeling over about 10 dozen of Cobra Cookies and a couple cases of orange juice. And we set it up, and she looked at me, she goes, "Boss, I don't know." So, we went back up to my office, and we went back up to my office, and there's one lone parent in there. And I'm walking him across the courtyard and say, you know, "We don't know what to expect on these, you know, these events." And then, Ms. Latimer, her, our gatekeeper, she goes, "Somebody better hurry up and open these doors." So, we went to the auditorium, we opened the doors, and I looked out there and there was about 75 parents that were ready to come into Fort Pierce Central High School. And the Kevin Costner movie, "Fill the Dreams," I kept thinking about, "If you build it, they will come." And that one scene when they build the, the baseball diamond and there's nobody there. So, as I was walking across the courtyard with that parent, I'm saying, "There's nobody here. How am I gonna pull this off?" And then, we opened the door and you see all the cars coming in, lined up for that field, and everybody's out there playing the game. And as I pulled that, opened up the auditory doors, I looked, and there's Mr. Joseph Lazo, teacher on special assignment at Fort Pierce Central High School, Mr. Robert Sullivan, math teacher, and Mr. Michael Swer, a government teacher. And they're in the audience, and I'm looking to them for my support, but I realize they're there as parents. Not then what we look at at school, we're defined as teachers, but really defined as, as, you know, fathers and brothers and uncles. So, that was a vivid memory, looking out there. And Mr. Swer afterwards said, "You were on your own, but you did a good job." But, you know, without the committee's help and that, it was, it was a great event. And, you know, we're looking at how to build it. Because at high schools, we were apprehensive, but now we're excited.
Also, Mr. Houston Tate, who has twin boys at Palm Point, also states that children with, involved, children with involved, caring fathers have a, have better outcomes. A number of studies suggest that fathers who are involved nurturing and playful with their infants having, have children with higher IQs as well as better logistics and cognitive abilities, and thus increasing the chances of academic success. Literature Review found that children whose fathers assume 40% or more of the family's, family's care tasks had better academic achievement than children whose fathers were less involved. And this from Mr. Houston Tate, Office of Community Renovations. And at this time, I would like to call Fort Pierce Interim Chief, Mr. Frank Armandro.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if you don't mind that we can kind of shorten all the testimonies, because we do have to go home tonight, but we are really enjoying, of course, Chief, Chief, I would never stop you from coming.
(laughing) Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Yost. Madam Chair, I'm gonna remind you, at the last meeting, you sort of cut me short, too. Short, too, so I won't take it personally, but that's okay. It was a wonderful opportunity for me personally, because I have two children that attend Lincoln Park. And it was a reminder for me that I need to connect with my children. Filling in as interim chief and being a member of Fort Pierce's command staff for the last 15 years now, we get caught up in the meetings that we have to attend. Like you aptly said, Madam Chair, we have to go home tonight because we have children. So, it was, it was an excellent reminder for me, what is most important in this world is our children. And professionally, it also reminded me that we have so many children out there that don't have a positive role model in their lives or a father in their lives. So, I'm encouraging all our officers over the next year, as this movement gains, gains forward motion, that we certainly, that they become involved in our school system and our children, to have that positive impact in someone's life, so we can build those relationships in our community, so we can bridge the, the trust aspect that we're having now in, in law enforcement in our communities. So, I thank you very much for this opportunity. I thank Dr. Perry for the initial invitation to join this movement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Armandro. If there is anyone else in the audience that was, is here to give their testimony, we want to make room for them. So, if there's anyone else that's coming.
That was the final.
Okay.
Comment. So, we...
So, as you've already heard from our colleagues, my colleagues, and the chief himself, this is a movement and not a moment. And I just want to brief, touch- is a movement and not a moment. And I just want to brief, touch briefly on those things that we are currently doing and planning to do in the very near future. And we're looking at it from the standpoint of just chunking. We're not trying to bite the entire apple, but take it one step at a time. And with the help of all the schools, and I know that my colleagues, principals from all the schools have definitely participated and done their fair share, we're going to do this one step at a time. And the committee is going to get back together to start planning other things for the very near future. Things like Father Sport Night, Donuts with Dads, Father Daughter Dances, Father Reading Events, Volunteer Opportunities at the School, informational nights, student-led conferences, and then even to the point where our participation in the Martin Luther King Day Parade is impacted. So we'd like to say thank you to everyone for their support from the St. Lucy School Board, Superintendent Yost, media outlets, all the St. Lucy schools, both cities of Port St. Lucy and Fort Pierce, the Black Star Project, elected officials, community members, and of course, most of all, a big thank you to all the 2,700 fathers who participated and made that commitment to their children. Thank you.
And I thank you, gentlemen. This truly did take the entire community. And despite the fact that it was held in October, I know that you have continually gathered to review the outcomes and to continue encouraging dads within the community to remain involved based on research to support their children and make a difference in their learning. This evening, we heard about data. We focused on special needs and making certain that we address not only the academic, but the disciplinary needs of our students, offering support and intervention. We also focused on the parent component specifically for our dads. One of the comments towards the end was to have dads involved in literacy. And this is Celebrate Literacy Week. So I hope that our schools are seeing many of the fathers who participated in October come out to read and participate in your activities this week. I thank all of our schools for their participation, their commitment, and their continued dedication to the students of St. Lucy County. In closing, I want to reference a document that was facilitated by Mrs. Carrie Patrick for publication in our Scripps Publications. And that means the print as well as the online digital publication. There are many phenomenal things going on in our schools. And this is just a wonderful composite and insert that was placed recently in the paper. So thank you for all you do. We do need to remember each child every day. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to move forward with Attorney Harold. Do you have any comments or updates for us this evening? Board members, we'll begin with Mr. Inglesall today.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Hensley?
Just a little bit of interest. There's an article in The New Yorker really about our former governor and testing and kind of toys, all that together. It's a very interesting article. It's pretty long, about 20 pages, but it's very interesting. There's also been articles in Wall Street Journal, New York Times. And one of the criteria regarding grading in schools, as you know, is there's always changes, constant changes. And one of our leaders in Tallahassee, who has been one of those people who are a proponent of constant change when it comes to education, complained that the federal government changed criteria on them. So it's kind of like, finally, maybe they have an understanding of what it's like to have everything in place and somebody changes their criteria and the state's ranking drops significantly because of that. So I thought those were interesting things. We need to always be aware of what's going on outside of our community that impacts our community.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Ms. Hilsen?
Just a quick comment. The Martin Luther King Parade, I thought, was so well done. I couldn't get over the floats. They were magnificent. Problem is, when you're in the parade, you don't see as much, but I was amazed at the kids and the floats and the people that came out. I've never seen so many children. That's a good sign for us. We are educators. More children, the better. Thank you.
Ms. Hawley?
Okay. I just want to mention Fort Pierce Central's The Addams Family Drama performance was absolutely professional and magnificent. I want to say thank you to Ms. Lisa Stewart and Mr. Boswell for a fantastic job. And also make the announcement for Hello, Dolly. I believe that's coming up this weekend. And I'm not too sure on the showings in the Times what that is. Port St. Lucy High School. Also, wanted to mention Pro Bass Shop, who provided a boat for the board members and superintendents to ride in the parade with not only just the boat, but the truck. So we thank you very much as a business out in the community that stepped up to the plate and have asked if they could do anything to help us with the parade. And that is what they did. Also, we had the roundtable present St. Lucy County to St. Lucy County, Rick Miller, who is the Kids at Hope founder. And he was here for four days. We had a two-day leadership this past week. And currently, we have 22 schools, Kids at Hope schools in our district and constantly moving forward for others. But we went to tour three of the schools. Magnificent presentation each school gave. The children were really on time in welcoming Rick Miller and the community leaders who came out, which was many of our political leaders. The mayors were out there and just so many different people that came together to enjoy the Kids at Hope within our schools. I think that's about it, except I did want to mention about the presentation that the Million Fathers' March gave. It was a wonderful presentation and we're excited about it. Last year, there were so many fathers that showed up. I happened to be at Sam Gaines Elementary, and it was absolutely incredible how many fathers showed up. And I'm looking forward to seeing other district-level events like that for fathers. I think that gets them excited to do things as a district all at one time for the fathers to get them motivated and the children to coming out like they did for the Fathers, Million Fathers' March. Okay, seeing that we have no unscheduled speakers this evening, we will end with the reminder of our St. Lucy County Public School Mission Statement. The mission of St. Lucy Public Schools is to ensure that all students graduate from safe and caring schools equipped with the knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed. Our next board meeting will be held February the 10th, 2015. At this time, we say goodnight to all. We are adjourned.